Um, I had a teacher the other day say to someone who kind of brought up a similar question. And she said, you know, the difference is we've had school board members can regurgitate lines that were told to them, or we've had school board members say, um, this is our deficit, or this is the cuts we have to make. And she said, but Greta will be the first school board member, I believe. As she says that, I'm going to believe it. And I think that's very important right now to think about in this race, like that trust.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the West neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
Uh, you sound good. Are you an experienced podcaster?
Not really, no. Um, I had another union buddy and we were just trying to reach members in like different ways. So we had a podcast, but it was like really shitty.
It's like, come on.
The worst quality on earth.
So you bragged about it at the candidate forum. You're like, hey, get a load of the podcast I started. Now you're telling me it was not that big a deal.
It was more like, it was really cool to have different ways to reach members. But I mean, my like tech skills at the time, uh, trying to get that all together. I, I think I would probably do better today.
Okay. Well, you sound good. And that's all that matters because podcasting is so easy these days. Even I can do it. You just need a webcam and a laptop and, uh, an email so you can reach out to people and invite them on your podcast. So, uh, this is the first episode in a series of four I'm doing with school board candidates, uh, two in District Six, uh, two at large. And today we're speaking to District Six candidate Greta Callahan, who, let me see if I get your bio right and you correct me.
Sure.
Kindergarten teacher, former Minneapolis Teachers Union President. Anything to add?
Uh, Mom, my son just graduated from Southwest High School. That's a pretty important one. But I actually do say, I always joke, I say, it is kind of in that order that you just said.
Okay. Uh, and so have you been paying attention to Kamala Harris going on these bro podcasts? People are saying that's the secret to winning the election. Have you been tuned into that?
Are you a bro podcast?
I'm starting to think I am because I am not familiar at all with school board issues. This feels like a bro podcast situation where you come on to humanize yourself and uh, talk circles around me because you know about this stuff and I don't. Cause usually I talk to like city hall people, uh, things that I know about.
You know, a lot of stuff, John.
I've read some articles. I've prepared more than I usually do for this. I watched that candidate forum.
Which one?
So there've been multiple ones? I watched the one with Tane Danger.
Okay. Then Lego Women Voters had one as well, which you should watch because it's all four candidates.
Oh, how do you do all four candidates in different districts?
Well, so there's Kim and Shayla for the at large, and then Laura and me for six. So they just asked us all the same questions.
Hmm.
And we'll be on the school board.
I get irritated when there are too many candidates and you don't get, uh, there's less, uh, focus on the candidates that I'm there to see, although at, at large is for everyone.
Yeah, two races. So it really wasn't, didn't feel like too much.
So during the Tane Danger forum that I watched last night, like he started in the same place that I'm going to start because it feels like all of the conversation is about the budget and, and it feels like, uh, a crisis situation. We've got the ballot question that also has to do with the budget, $20 million a year, uh, increase in the property tax levy for schools. So just like without getting into the budget yet, like, is that the right place to start, you think?
Like with you and me or?
Is that the right place for the election to be focused? When voters are thinking about, uh, this, the school board races this year, is the focus, like, are the stakes budget related? Like solving that?
So this is really important in general and to talk about because it, it actually is kind of the crux of all of our problems, right? And we'll get into why, but I will say on the doors, that is not the first thing out of people's mouths, right? Like they're, they're like concerned about their own child or their own neighborhood and what they're feeling on a daily basis or over the last couple of years, or what they're worried about ahead. Um, and so I think, you know, at the bottom of a lot of that is how we're funded and how we all need to try to decide what way we believe is best by working with others. And so we can start there.
Okay, let's, let's start there.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, earlier this year, there, there was talk of 110 million dollar budget gap, which has been filled, right?
Well, yes. So they were able to use money from, they have a general fund balance. But also there was a ton of COVID money left over that they just had to spend up pretty quickly.
So it's not, it's not fixed for next year. Next year, there will still be a big budget gap to fill. And 20 million only feel, fills a fraction of that. And so you have, where do you find the additional 90 million? Or maybe it's a little less than that. Like between that 20 and 110, like, how do you fill that?
Well, I think we need to first of all, look at what has changed. So five years ago, six years ago, four years ago, we are always saying like, there is a fiscal cliff looming. And with all the COVID money going away, I mean, that's pretty serious. And, um, the fact that we all even have to sit here and experience that loss. I don't think there's a district in the country that didn't need that money to fill some of those mandates that aren't funded. Um, but we weren't saying 110 million every single year. So can we also look at what has changed and why we're at that number right now? And is this something that we, we are, are we at the bare minimum right now, bare bones in our spending? And we're going to have to find other ways to make cuts? Or are we going to focus on retaining, stabilizing and increasing enrollment, which does increase revenue? Are we going to focus on having our lobbyists, um, do everything that he can? And as a school board and as a community, uh, fight for some of those mandates to be fully funded? Because that is something we can all get on board with and, and should be on board with and should be hyper focused on that. And so I'm excited to get on the board because in my experience as a teacher leader, I, we have done a lot of Freedom of Information requests. We have asked for things like outside contracts or, uh, different areas that are getting spent when it's kind of general, like we want the nitty gritty. And I'm excited to be able to get to see some of the nitty gritty.
So one of the questions people sent in were very, uh, I think they were hostile to the other candidate in the race. They were.
Oh, really? I usually get hostility.
There were no like hostile questions submitted for you. Although I don't know enough to interpret that. So maybe there were, and I don't realize it. But one of them is you gotta ask Laura about, uh, closing schools. So the line against her is, uh, the line on this race is she's the one who will close schools. Greta is not. Like, is that the right way to look at the District Six race? There's one candidate who's going to close some schools and there's other one pledging not to?
I think the way we need to look at this race is I bring something that no one in the history of the Minneapolis Public Schools, School Board Races, to my knowledge, has been able to bring. And that's not only my experience as a parent in the district, not only my experience as a teacher and a teacher teaching in the poor school in our district, um, not only as someone who, as just a, a rank and file teacher was bringing in elected leaders into my classroom to see the beautiful faces that they were making decisions about and the genius children that they were making decisions about and assumptions about. But having been the elected leader of the teachers and having been someone who, when we were, all of our unions were in a silo, worked extremely well with our education support professionals, our food service workers, our custodians, our, um, electricians, our, you know, our painters, you name it in the building so that we could all come together to try to fight for the schools that we all deserve. And so bringing that experience and experience in governance, experience having multiple death threats, experience having an armed guard outside of my house for over a month. These are things that are unique to the experience I bring and do give me the running head start that we really need right now, especially with, um, the change that we've seen in leadership at MPS. And, uh, I think we are on the path to hopefully a more stable district. And I, my perspective, I think is critical right now.
So the, the fact that you needed an armed guard outside your house is why I stay away from school board issues.
Smart. Genius.
So what, some words that I hear a lot from everyone, I hear right sizing a lot. I hear stabilize. I've heard stabilize from you a bunch at the candidate forum, I think in an interview that I'd read. And so when I, it feels to me from the outside, not somebody, somebody who's like prepping for this episode and reading a lot, feels like a kind of a surprising consensus on right sizing, which I interpret as school closures, building closures are inevitable. Uh, even from people like Colin Beechey, who I think, uh, you probably liked him, right?
Of course.
And so am I getting the right impression that that has become kind of a consensus? And are you saying for your, your candidacy that that's out of the question for you? Are you, are you going against the grain on that?
Well, let's back up here. The term right sizing a district is like coined from the corporate ed reform movement. We were saying right sizing the district in 2007 when we closed down seven schools. Um, right sizing the district would be getting the 42% of eligible MPS kids into our buildings that we have, uh, space and room for. Um, and I have been very clear when it comes to school closures because I have experienced them in this district. I know what this means and we need leaders who are asking and getting answers to these questions before we are ever making a decision like that. Number one, how much money are we going to save from closing a particular school? Like, we need to look at those numbers. Number two, how many families do we believe we will retain if we close that school? And how did we get to that number? And last, how many students need to enroll in that school to keep it open? And why aren't we hyper fixated on that last question? And so you better believe it that I am committed to doing everything we can to retain our families right now, to stabilize this district, to not do things that are going to lead to the dismantling of our public school system because I've already, uh, been in this city while that's been happening. And I, I want to like help lead this optimistic vision of what is possible when we start thinking about it in terms of like, stop, stop all the new initiatives. We have initiative fatigue. Let's stabilize. Let's co-create with families. Let's co-create these decisions and do what's going to be best for our school district because school closures have led to more school closures. And four years ago, when I was outside protesting the CDD and speaking at school board meetings, I was saying, in four years, you're going to talk about school closures. And here we are. And instead of saying like, hmm, we've made some huge mistakes. We have not listened to families. We were not mathing our math correctly. Instead of doing that and saying like, what can we do right now to keep the people we have, and many of whom are hanging by a thread? Um, we're hearing this other discussion. Instead of going, wow, we, some of our decisions are the reason why we're even discussing school closures. What decisions can we make to stabilize and, and have a thriving public school system again? And as a parent, as someone who's worked in our schools, like that is my unique experience in this race. It is critical to take into account all of the humans in this very human decision. We are not a business.
So I have, I have this quote written down from your interview with Melissa Whitler from, uh, Minneapolis Schools Voices, I think it's called. I'm sorry.
Because she misquoted me in that article and took words out of the middle of my sentence.
Well.
And Melody has since apologized.
Well, did they fix it? I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it to you, tell me if it sounds right. I don't, it doesn't sound controversial.
Oh, okay, great.
They're in this vicious cycle, cut, fire, close, cut, fire, close. We all deserve the best here in Minneapolis and we have to have a solid plan to retain our families and stabilize. So it's similar to what the answer you just gave me, right?
Yeah.
And so I imagine, I imagine the people who are proposing the cuts think of what they're doing as stabilizing, like, uh, stabilizing the situation. And what I hear you saying is stop the constant changes, stabilization in, in those terms is where you're coming from. Like, I think both sides are trying to stabilize, I think. Right? You just have different definitions of what stabilized means.
More than anything, you know, we're having these discussions without a simultaneous plan to retain and grow, or to take care of the, you know, 3,000 new to country kids that have actually reversed our enrollment decline. And so I know that this is what families are most worried about right now, but it actually has felt like the board has kind of taken a pause on this, um, just from the last couple of meetings. So I also don't want to be like jumping to any conclusions of where the board members are standing at this moment.
Do you want to, let's go to some reader questions. I got a lot of reader questions. Uh, first, how do you two, how do you two differ, meaning Greta and Laura, in your opinions on the prime responsibility of public schools?
We differ in a lot of ways.
Okay. Read, read the website, reader.
That's okay. Um, so I'm the only licensed teacher in this race. I'm the only person who's taught in the Minneapolis Public Schools. Um, I, like, this is something we cannot take lightly. I have the support and trust of the workers making our schools happen. From the people building the walls, to painting the walls, to feeding the kids, to sweeping the floors, to driving the buses, to teaching our children. I remember what it was like to not have that trust and to be on the line and not trust people who were on our school board. I'm so happy we're in a different place now, but like, that is a critical component that sets me apart. Um, and you know, you did just describe another difference, which is our, um, how we're approaching school closures. And kind of to my first point, I'm, Frank Hornstein actually said this to me the other day, and I felt like it was such a succinct way to sum up something that makes me unique in this race. And he just said, Greta, you're battle tested. You've already had 400 emails to answer a day. You've already, uh, had to draw boundaries, uh, with people who, you know, you thought were on the side of public education but are not. You've already had to meet all the players out there that are interested and invested in the Minneapolis Public Schools and navigate the system as a teacher, as a parent and as a leader. And you have also shown that you can stay focused through all of that. And so I, let you know, looking back at some of those really horrible experiences, like having an armed guard outside of your house or people show up to your house and, uh, film in your windows, um, those are, those are horrifying. And at the time, I mean, I like, I'm a diagnosed PTSD from some of this. And I'm, I'm so the person who is like, well, it prepared me for now.
So, uh, the people come into your house. What was that about?
It's actually like creepy dark web, right wing stuff to scare you. So like they'd take photos of your house and dox you and put it online. Um, and a lot of that happened around the time of the strike. But even after, like, um, we were sharing, MFT was sharing about a gender resource fair and like the crazy amount of hate and death threats I got just from that. Like, it is a weird creepy world we're living in. And so, yeah, I, it's hard to even think about some of those things.
So it's some right winger gets upset about something they saw about Minneapolis. You're a prominent, uh, schools associated person in Minneapolis and therefore let's send terrible things to this person?
Yes, or take photos of her home to intimidate her and put them online.
Well, that's awful. We, we see too much of that, uh, these days. I'm sorry you had to deal with that.
Thank you. Me too.
I thought this was a cool question. I was very intrigued by this question. Creation of a downtown high school. So I'm quoting here from the person, enrollment is way down, especially in high school and MPS. How do you feel about creating a general downtown high school? All high schoolers ride metro transit. Why not leverage a general location that all can find acceptable? And they suggest the old Dayton's building would be perfect for a downtown high school. Uh, any reaction to that?
We already have a downtown high school and it's called Fair. And a lot of people don't know that. And it's a super cool school and your kids should go there.
Yeah. Send your kid to the existing downtown high school later. I'm sorry for finding your question cool and interesting.
It is cool and interesting. Let's add another one. Let's expand. Come on.
To da, a second downtown high school is the best of that question. Okay. Uh, a couple of questions connecting kids' mental health as it relates to smartphones and lack of self-reliance and independence. So the first one is like, what should the district's policy be with regard to reducing the influence of smartphones, uh, in school?
Okay. Well, a lot of people don't know this and I barely knew it, but there is a law that, um, by I think March 2025, there actually has to be a policy around this. And so we're already seeing MPS implement policies. And just for, um, a little historical knowledge about this, because I think this is like so, and I like say this as a teacher in the district, this is so MPS. Um, they were like, every school, figure it out, figure out what you want to do with the cell phone policy. And you can imagine like who gets in trouble and like yelled at when each school is figuring it out. It's like, oh, it's the teacher. Um, so it's really nice to have a policy in place now. And I, you know, my son's friends, he sells friends at Southwest and I have a bunch of teacher friends, obviously, in like every school. But they were saying like Southwest feels completely different this year already. Like the halls are quieter. Um, teachers are truly feeling like there's so much more focus in class. And the only things that, uh, I've heard are kind of getting in the way of that is if someone isn't following the policy, um, you know, to be cool or, or who knows for what reason. Um, and so, yeah, what I know right now is that having a cell phone policy where kids are not on their phones and they're putting it in, you know, like the bag or the little holder on the wall during class has changed how our schools are feeling. And that alone is great.
Well, that's interesting. There's a little behind the scenes, uh, like, I'm curious how it's enforced because if you don't force them to put it in a lockbox, uh, during the day, I can't imagine how it could possibly be enforced. As someone who is addicted to their phone.
Yeah.
Like, uh, children are not going to be able to resist looking at their phone if you don't lock it away. So they kind of make them put it in a, in a bag.
I think like in pouches, um, on like a holder on the wall. So like, it's, you know, not in your hands anymore. Yeah. And then you just get it after class.
Okay. Here's a question. How do you envision the school district and individual schools becoming more inclusive for disabled students? And this person has a, a personal story. My son is autistic. He is supposed to be in the least restrictive environment per federal policy and law, which we can think of as being the most normalized and mainstreamed environment for his classes and school experience. But often, even with the most well-intentioned teachers and staff, his experience has been separate from the vast majority of his similar age peers, even when in the same school, sometimes in the same classroom. This became and becomes especially glaring once a disabled student enters high school. What are your thoughts on having an inclusive school experience for everyone compared to the current system that seems to put students into narrow lanes, college prep, hope and pray they graduate, disabled, et cetera?
Yeah. Well, I can tell you as a teacher, we were fighting for the one thing that will make a difference with this, which is ratios, um, which is caseload caps. Right now, we're seeing such a difference based on the building, just on how many students need, uh, those additional services. And so if you're in a building that doesn't have a lot of needs and you are staffed fully, your child is receiving a better experience. And then there are other schools where, I have a special education resource teacher at a school who, you know, she should have maybe 10 to 12 kids on her caseload and she has 30 right now. And she's, she feels unsuccessful every day. She knows she's, she cannot meet the needs of those students and is, and then put the paperwork on top of what our kids are doing. Um, and so this of course comes kind of back to some of those unfunded mandates. But also, these are things that as teachers, we have been fighting really, really hard for. And, um, just this last contract got to a place where we are going to start even like doing this time study and like a, a longer look at what that looks like and what is possible. Because we do know that a lot of this is not having enough money to get more special education teachers because we are not fully funded when it comes to that mandate. But this is something that like, I, again, one of those issues where I think we can all get on board with and agree with is that we do need to have caps on these caseloads, especially for our special education teachers.
I forgot to do the follow-up to the cell phone question. Uh, it's related to transportation from the same person, I think. With growing concern about children's lack of independence and wellbeing, how would you work to create safe routes for walking and biking to school? Encouraging students to travel independently while reducing the heavy car traffic and chaotic parent drop off?
Well, so this looks different at every school. Um, I just want to like name that because there isn't, uh, you know, heavy parent drop off at some schools, uh, just because buses are easier or they are close, the kids are closer. Um, or people have cars or don't have cars. But I think about, um, so I have a can, future constituent who writes to me a lot about this issue, uh, especially around Southwest High School. Because if you've ever been over there during a pickup or drop off, it is like, I can't believe there aren't 20 accidents a day. Um, and I think like, what a great opportunity for the school, like the principal and leaders and the PTA and the teachers to come together to, um, like make it a thing. Even if it's like, let's start with like Mondays, we're walking to school or we're doing it together, or here's a buddy system. I think we could get creative. And I think that's also one of those areas that has to be co-created, uh, with the ground floor, especially with all the things we're dealing with, our laundry list of items in our schools. I think that's like a really fun thing that we could be working on together, uh, how to do that because the carbon footprint is too big. And, um, and you know, again, uh, when we're in our neighborhood schools, walking to school is a lot easier. If you feel safe, uh, on your streets in your neighborhood, that makes it even better. And so it's not impossible, but I think it would take logistics coordination and leading people to lead that.
I think you've already touched on this, but this question, uh, would you vote for the CDD today?
No.
Okay. We, we can leave it there.
No way. You know, let's talk about that though, can we?
Okay. Yeah, I've got time if you do. I want to get to, I've got two more after this. I just don't want to keep you way too long, but you can expand.
Well, okay. So I have all, I have been critical of the CDD since the beginning because I knew what would happen. I knew that this would lead to a massive enrollment decline. And I think. And I think a lot of people were shamed and gaslit. And it still led to where we are now, right? We're like, enrollment is down, uh, we need to talk about closing schools. And so, you know, if there's anyone out there who does not know what the CDD is, I think it's like the easiest way to explain it is we were busing kids everywhere. We had magnet schools all over the city. And on paper, this sounds great. The CDD was gonna say, hey, we're putting our magnets centrally located and everyone's gonna go back to their community schools. And that sounds great on paper. But to do it overnight in the middle of a pandemic and something like ten thousand kids had to switch schools and parents who could make a different choice, a lot of them did. That is where it was dangerous. And people like me, four years ago, were saying, hey, let's just do this with new incoming kindergarteners. Let's not get rid of our K eights. That's something that works. That's something that families love. And when I even like, let's like take a step back from that because we all know that that vote passed, uh, six yes votes, three no votes. And when you think about our open enrollment laws in the state of Minnesota, which are wildly loose, like, it should not be this easy to, to go anywhere you want. And, and that's what we're up against. So like charter is yes, private schools, yes. Like, like, these are all part of our reality right now. And on top of it, you can just be like, I'm going to Bloomington. I don't know how that wasn't taken into account more when making this decision around the CDD because whether we like it or not, those are the waters we're swimming in, that it is that easy. And so to, you know, piss off thousands of families and they, and it's that easy to go somewhere else, that's one of the many reasons why we're in this mess right now.
So, uh, here's, I'm quoting a reader again. "School boards have the challenge of dealing with many passionate stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, teachers, unions and administrators." So, uh, basically, are you gonna lose friends, uh, going from a teachers' union president to elected school board member? Can you imagine there are decisions you'll have to make that will cost you personally?
I, I guess I'm just not concerned about that. So anyone who's an actual friend to me knows what I'm rooted in, like, period. The people I'm surrounded by, the people supporting my campaign, my, my former members, like, they know that any decision I make would be made rooted in all the right stuff. I had a teacher the other day say to someone who kind of brought up a similar question and she said, you know, the difference is we've had school board members kind of regurgitate lines that were told to them, or we've had school board members say, um, this is our deficit or this is the cuts we have to make. And she said, but Greta will be the first school board member, I believe. As she says that, I'm gonna believe it. And I think that's very important right now to think about in this race, like that trust.
I've noticed a pattern in the case you're making, uh, both, uh, some, some written comments and also from the candidate forum. Phrases like start a revolution, uh, put our sights on the change that has to be made and that is at the state and federal level. I'm enraged with the government. At the candidate forum, you said, we should be rioting in the streets. So.
About, hang on, about these unfunded mandates?
Metaphorically, not literal rioting, just like be very, be very upset with the way things are, people.
Yeah.
And, uh, you've also said like, we should be, in Minneapolis, everyone should be united. We should be united front, making this case to other levels of government to fund schools, to, to fund the mandates, fund the unfunded mandates. And so I'm wondering like, is school board the right level of government to, to be doing those things? Like, is that where you can be most effective, you think? Like, why choose to run for school board when you think the problem is at higher levels?
Yeah. So this was never a dream of mine, ever. Over a year ago, I said to my members, uh, I'm not running for president again. This is very hard on my kindergarten teacher soul. We have amazing new leaders. We have a whole executive board who reflects our students. I am so proud of where our union is and I'm not gonna run again. And, and I said the words, I just need a break from the Minneapolis Public Schools. Um, and I really, I, I really believed that. And if Ira Jordan, who is our only native voice in the school board, was running, I would never have run against him. But someone was running against him. And when he dropped out of this race or decided not to run again, I felt like it was my duty as a citizen with all of the experience I have, with the knowledge, with the expertise that literally no one else, this is, this is a unique experience I'm gonna bring. And a unique, uh, base of humans who trust me, who will trust someone on the school board. And so I truly felt like I had no choice. And the more I'm out here campaigning and getting to talk to people, which is honestly the best part, of course. Like, it restores your faith in humanity. People are so wonderful and so good on the doors and on the phones. But through that, I feel like even if I don't win, at least I'm bringing some education in, into these conversations about like where our collective fight should be. And it really should be about the fact that we have these huge mandates that are not funded. And then we're all siphoning from our general funds and fighting with each other and our children are suffering and our public schools are dismantling. And that is a problem and it's, it should be a uniting issue. And so, you know, if nothing else, I'm a kindergarten teacher at heart and I hope to bring some like education and revolution into this whole race. But under no circumstance would I ever wanna run for anything else. And I'm pleased I am on record saying that, like, I, this, this kind of work is the hardest work. Because, you know, as a school board member, you get like a tiny little stipend, you have to have a full-time job. And you have to, you have to know what's going on, you have to deeply care and you still receive all the, you know, the letters and emails and sit downs and, uh, the good and the bad, the ugly that come with, uh, an elected position. And so I, I'm here because it is my duty as a citizen with the history I have in the public schools and my very, uh, long, hard fight to strengthen our public school system.
They sucked you back in, is what they did.
Sucked me right back in.
Yeah, it's, you're not doing this for glory or money, really. It's, uh, it's low pay, very high stakes and the, the upside for you in the end is, that's why I say District Six is lucky to have a choice. Like, you don't always have opponents in school board races.
Oh, yeah, two out of our four right now are unopposed. Yeah.
So, uh, District Six, you're very fortunate to have a choice this year. And, uh, so recommendations and my only request of you for your recommendation is that you can't answer this question the way you answered it in another venue, uh, by saying you love door knocking. You can't answer it that way. So what can you recommend to people that you're, you're having a lot of fun doing and not door knocking? You can't say door knocking.
Right now, this is all I, this is all I'm doing.
Do you not unwind in any way? Do you not have a thing you do to relax? What do you do to relax?
You wanna see my pugs? They're like how I find joy every day.
Love to see some pugs.
Make everybody happy here. All right, one pug.
Who's this pug?
Maisy.
Hello, Maisy.
Okay, hang on, now Marvin. He's up here.
Oh, Marvin, look at Marvin. Do they just hang around you all the time? You didn't have to go far to get them.
Yeah, they're just, they're the best. So if anybody needs joy in your life, go hug a pug.
What wonderful dogs, Maisy and Marvin. Where do you, do you have a favorite place you like to walk them?
Well, often it's just right around my neighborhood. I am just right by Armitage, Kenny. And I have like a sister who's two blocks this way and a brother who's three blocks this way. I'm one of eight kids. And five of us are in South Minneapolis. And so it's easy to just quick walk them over to one of their houses so I can see my little nieces and nephews. But otherwise, I mean, a lake, a trail, if I can, but most of my walking is door knocking. And, you know, uh, one smidge of joy out of that is my son who went to the U of M this, just this fall. It's kind of forced him in a good way to come back and help me. So he comes on the weekends and door knocks with me and he's just such a light in the world. And it's just so great to still get to have him around and help the campaign as well.
Well, thank you for being my first of four candidates, school board candidates on the Wedge Live Podcast. Greta Callahan, uh, is a candidate for Minneapolis School Board in District Six. Thank you. This went really well and I appreciate.
Thanks for being a great interviewer and an ethical interviewer. We appreciate you in the world.
Thank you. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.